We can bring the commission meeting to order. Again, good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission. This is our September 5th, 2016 meeting. Streamed on the ncpc.gov website. We do have a quorum, and so we will proceed without objection to the agenda that's been publicly We will have a change in just a moment. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman, and I don't have an official report other than to welcome folks back. August is the one month of the year when the commission does not meet. That is not to say that the staff is not fully engaged and very hard at work. They are, and it's a very productive month, so welcome back. The second item I would note is that later this month, I think, the 24th, is the opening of the African American History and Culture Museum. Very exciting project, a new Smithsonian institute on the facility on the Mall. NCPC, we have played a great role in that, as have many hundreds or thousands of other people who have supported that project, and so it's coming to fruition, and we're all very excited about it. Should be a great day. Agenda item number two is, we have distributed to you at your desk, and maybe by email as well, to commission members, the proposed calendar for calendar year 2017. Again, there is no August meeting, and I would note that in July, just to draw your attention, our normally scheduled first Thursday meeting would be July the 6th, which perhaps is too close to holiday enjoyment, so we have proposed the July meeting, the next Thursday, which would be July the 13th, which is a bit into the month. Is that okay with everyone, July 13th? Okay. So, all of that is on the document before you. Is there a motion to adopt the calendar year 2017 calendar? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. It's adopted. Thank you. Agenda item number three is the report of the executive director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome back to our commission. The second public meeting regarding the draft FBI J. Edgar Hoover Site Square Guidelines will be held tomorrow, September 9th, at 10:00 a.m., right here in the commission chambers. Tomorrow's presentation will cover the same material that was presented at last night's public meeting. Interested members of the public are welcome to attend. For those who cannot attend the meeting, this meeting will be livestreamed and also available on our website to view a few days after the presentation. We also anticipate bringing the draft square guidelines to the commission at your October meeting. Today, the commission will hear presentations from the four finalists of our memorials for the future competition, which was co-sponsored by NCPC, the National Parks Service, and Van Allen Institute. I'd like to note that members of the public are invited to view the finalist exhibition at the Kennedy Center Hall of Nations through October 20th. So if you're not able to see it tonight, we do hope that you're able to see it while it's being exhibited sometime over the next month. I'd like to formally congratulate Diane Sullivan, who is a recently appointed Director of Urban Design and Plan Review. Most recently, Diane served as a senior planner and project manager to the Southwest Eco-District Pledge and the Commission's point on the district zoning regulation review. Today is Diane's first meeting in her new role. Finally, we welcome Annie Rice. Annie? A senior at the University of Maryland, majoring in environmental science and policy. She will work in our Office of Public Engagement, focusing on our flooding and stormwater work this semester, so welcome to Annie. And that is my presentation for today.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Costa? Congratulations, Diane. Welcome, Annie. Agenda item number four is the legislative update, and general counsel, Ms. Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one item to report. It pertains to HR 1475, which is the Korean War Veterans Memorial Wall of Remembrance Act. This was introduced in March of 15, passed the House in February of 16, and this week, earlier this week, it was approved by the Senate, so it will be going to the President next for signature. Pursuant to this act, a wall of remembrance will be added to the Korean War Memorial to commemorate U.S. soldiers, members from the Republic of Korea Armed Forces, and members from the United Nations Command who were killed in action, wounded in action, missing in action, or were prisoners of war.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Tyler? Thank you. Agenda item number... Yes, please.
Following up on that, is there, does the, I have not read the language of the bill. Does it stipulate design content? Because it was very specific, a glass wall around the trees, or is the design of the thing now up for the usual...
I don't recall specific language, but I'd be happy, let me check the act and get back with you.
Okay.
I can speak to that.
Oh, yeah.
The language does not stipulate the design that was presented previously, and it states, I think, that it has to follow the Commemoration Act process.
Right, right.
So it'll go through the normal design process, and in our discussions with health staff, we included a number of possibilities for how it might be done, given the number of problems with that particular proposal, so we'll see where it goes.
I think what happened is that was originally in the House virgin, and the Senate passed what they call an amendment in the nature of a substitute, and that's where the change may have occurred.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number five is the consent calendar, and currently we have eight items on the consent calendar. I would draw your attention to item number 5B, File 7756. We received a letter late yesterday from DC Water expressing some concerns, and so what I would recommend is that the chair entertain a motion to move File 7756, the item 5B, from the consent calendar to the action agenda for purposes of discussion and for purposes of a possible amendment. Is there, there's a motion and a second? All in favor of moving that item to the action agenda, say aye. Opposed, no? It is moved, and we will take that up momentarily. The remaining items, now seven items on the consent calendar, are as follows. Item 5A is approving preliminary and final building plans for AT&amp;T antenna upgrades to the Hubert Humphrey Building, Lafayette Building, Liberty Loan Building, and the Herbert C. Hoover Building. Agenda item 5C is approving the preliminary and final site and building plans for a new ground vehicle fueling facility at Fort Belvoir, the South Post, and Fairfax County. Item 5D is approving the preliminary and final site and building plans for commercial cellular infrastructure at the Pentagon Reservation. Item 5E is approving the preliminary and final site and building plans for an academic instruction facility at Marine Corps Base Quantico in Prince William County, Virginia. Item 5F approves a correction to a January 10, 2013 commission action modifying the general development plan for the Anacostia Stream Valley Park in Prince George's County for railroad expansion purposes. Item 5G is the approval of preliminary and final plans for flood hardening at the Cleveland Park, Shaw Howard University, and Capitol South Metro Rail Stations, three stations. Item 5H is the approval preliminary, is the approval of preliminary site and building plans for the Center Building East Entry, Department of Homeland Security Headquarters at the St. Elizabeth West Campus. So those remaining seven items, is there a motion to adopt those items?
Question.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on any one of the items? Mr. May?
Yes, I just want to make one comment about two of the proposals. We have two antenna-related projects that are in here. One is atop a number of GSA buildings, the other is at the Pentagon. And it's just one of those pet peeves for me, is the way so many buildings are getting junked up with all these antennas on the top, and that's obvious in the one case. And it's not enough that I would ever, that in this circumstance I would vote against that project, but it's apparent that already there's a lot of junk up there on the top of the GSA buildings, and I really do think that we need to look more carefully at that to see what can be done in the future to better locate or disguise these things. And I bring up the DOD project because they actually made an effort to hide those antennas and built sort of a false structure to enclose them. And while I don't know that the resulting design is really fantastic, at least it's not covered with, you know, they didn't just paint them the color of the building and pretend that it would go away. And it is, of course, a refrigeration plant, not the most elaborate or important building in itself, although it is one of the finest, classically detailed refrigeration plants built of IFIS that I've seen. But still, I think there was an effort to cover it, and I think that, I do appreciate that, and I hope that we pay more attention to that in the future. And I'm not calling out GSA specifically for this. This is a problem kind of across the board, and it's an issue in many of the zoning cases that I participate in, and it's just, I can't let my pet peeve go on this one, so, thank you.
Understood. Any further discussion or questions about any item on the consent calendar? Having it moved and seconded, all in favor of the consent calendar, say aye. Opposed, no? Passed. Moving to the action items, we'll first take up that which we just moved from consent to action, and it is for approving comments. This is not to approve a project, but this is simply to approve comments to the GSA, NCPC to GSA, on the 35% site and building plans for parcel L2 of the Southeast Federal Center pursuant to the 2005 memorandum of understanding. And I understand we have someone here from representing DC Water to speak, but, Mr. Hart, you'll say a word or two about this.
Sorry. Give us a moment while we're opening this. Yeah, I just really wanted to have a image on the screen to show where this is for folks. I know that there's, in the packet, there's the PowerPoint that shows where this is located, and with respect to the DC Water property, which is to the west of this, and you'll note in the, the parcel L2 is located on the Southeast Federal Center, which is this parcel here, as well as a portion of it over here. And the DC Water parcel is just to the west of where parcel L is. This is showing what the master plan had back in 2007, which is the most recent master plan that we have for the project, again, where the DC Water, or Wassa, property is, and then the parcel L, which is to the east of that. I think GSA would like to make a few comments on this as well.
Ms. Rice?
My understanding was that someone from DC Water wanted to speak, so I'll follow up.
Okay. I think we have Tracy Thiemack, representing DC Water. Welcome.
Thank you, members of the commission. We are just here, I have with me from DC Water, I have Quindalyn Brown, and we also have an engineer from DC Water we wanted to have available if you had specific questions about the letter that you received last night. DC Water's position at this point, we understand that the authority of the commission is not to disapprove or approve the application, but to submit comments on it, and our concern at this point is that this has been in the process really since 2003, but since 2007, with these concerns, and we have not seen the coordination of efforts with GSA and Forest City that we would really like to see, so that these appropriate boundaries and the structural integrity issues can be resolved before this project moves forward. So that's really our intent, to bring that to your attention. We would ask that the comments you submit on the proposal strongly encourage, we're essentially asking for your help to strongly encourage GSA and Forest City to coordinate efforts, so that we don't have any of the impacts that were outlined in the letter. But again, we're here primarily to answer any specific questions you may have, and we do have members of the engineering staff here as well.
Thank you. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
We may, and we may have questions.
Great, okay.
Ms. Rice?
Okay, so the, for, to refresh everyone's memory, this is a development agreement that GSA has with Forest City, Washington. This is parcel is, the Southeast Federal Center master plan was approved in 2007. This parcel is part of that development. The commission's responsibility is to provide comments that are advisory in the 45 days. As Carlton already mentioned, we do not have approval authority over the site and building I'm going to call up to the podium Brett Banks, who is GSA's project executive, because I can't say that I've been in these meetings, but I do know that GSA and Forest City have held at least five meetings over the past two years on parcel L2 with DC Water, and we are preparing a response to the letter at the moment, and we, which we believe is somewhat inaccurate.
Mr. Banks, welcome.
Good afternoon. Excuse my appearance, I wasn't planning on being here today. So I just kind of further what Mina has said. The project, we have an MOU, obviously, with NCPC, we also have one with the Commission of Fine Arts, and there is also a programmatic agreement that lays out terms and conditions related to the review of the entire design at the site. To that end, we have sent out on every parcel and on the master plan, notification to all the consulting parties, of which DC Water is one. So we, and Carlton has seen that he's been on those emails, because NCPC is a consulting party. So while we are willing to work with DC Water to potentially address any issues they have, we have done our job from a regulatory perspective, and as a good neighbor, in sending out notification, but there hasn't been any participation from DC Water. So I don't want to get into the he said, she said, but I do want to just correct what was just said and clarify what's in the letters, that we have done what we're supposed to, but we are willing to have some conversation. And I've had three conversations with DC Water's general counsel since the letter, the first letter came in a week ago. So just want to set the record straight, but again, we are willing to engage in conversation.
Thank you. Ms. Rice?
So having said that, we have an amendment that we'd like to offer to the EDR, which would, and I have language, which generally states, "We will continue to coordinate with DC Water." Of course, in perens. And that's really all we have to say.
Okay, you have, you want...
Language? I'm just, if anybody, I'm sure Peter has a question.
Mr. May? Just because I'm leaning forward, right? No, I, you know, all we've heard so far is about the discussions between GSA and DC Water, and I, you know, because we just got the letter today, I'm not sure I fully understand what the meat of the matter is. What are the actual issues here that we are dealing with? Is it, does it have to do with pipes that are under the site?
Structural issues.
Have you to do with sites...
Access issues under the street and under the site.
Under the street.
And a lot, and much of the design has been driven in consideration of these issues, which is why it's a little bit difficult to receive this letter.
Yeah, and I mean, aren't there, I mean, does DC Water have explicit easements through the property that, for the protection of their infrastructure?
Brett? I don't want to say the wrong thing.
Understand.
Yeah, he's got the details. I've been in the meetings for designing.
But their infrastructure, you have their engineer here, so you can bring him up. Their infrastructure runs underneath what is Second Street. If Carlton, if you go back two slides...
I was going to show you where this...
Oh, okay.
So this is the, what they're talking about, which is here.
So it's not in, it's not in the property boundary line of parcel L, it's just outside of it. And so, to the point about, I know that Forest City's had some conversations with DC Water about this infrastructure, and the 2007 master plan, Second Street, was laid out to be reconstituted as a vehicular street, and it's funded through a pilot program down there, where Forest City, working with DDOT, takes care of all the improvements, and then they deed the streets over to Forest City, or over to the district when they're done. So Second Street, as you can see, to the west of L, was, again, in the approved master plan, was to be vehicular.
I don't know if that's true or not.
My understanding is, and I wasn't part of the conversations, but that Forest City has had conversations with DC Water about their infrastructure, to the end that we actually had another submission on this calendar, which we removed to have further discussions with DC Water, because the amendment to the master plan was going to change Second Street to a pedestrian street, because we had heard from DC Water that the infrastructure, or Forest City had heard from DC Water, that the infrastructure was poor and couldn't actually handle heavy trucks or a vehicular road there, so they were going to, they were going to change it to a pedestrian right-of-way. And so, but we pulled that off so that we, because the letter came in, and we hadn't yet, we hadn't heard from DC Water directly at GSA through the consultation process and the programmatic agreement.
So is, I mean, just from a technical perspective, the entirety of the issue has to do with infrastructure that's within the Second Street or the Third Street right-of-way, whether it's declared, it's all Second? I saw lines on both sides, so...
The issue here, I think, is with their infrastructure.
Just with Second.
It's just the Second Street, yeah. So, but it's...
And the access issue has to do with, I mean, don't they have access off of, they don't need, they don't, DC Water doesn't need access off of Second Street?
You would have to, I think they would have to answer that question. I don't know. Again, this has been the laid-out and approved master plan that would, again, reconstitute Second Street there.
Okay.
I don't know whether they can enter off canal or come off of Tingi. I don't know the answer to that question.
All right. Thank you.
But we are within our property boundaries here, and we're at 35%, so we, you know, they haven't performed the geotechnical studies or the engineering studies that are required, but they certainly, you know, they've developed many of the parcels down at the site, you know, on parcel O here, there's a Womata Tunnel that goes underneath, so they understand all these constraints.
You've answered my question.
Okay.
I yield to.
Oh, so here's our proposed language to add to the EDR. Notes that GSA and Forest City, Washington, will continue working with DC Water to discuss existing below-grade sewer infrastructure along Second Street Southeast, and report back to staff on the status of this discussion prior to submitting the master plan amendment.
Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved to second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, I'm not clear. The parties have not been able to get together the way we would like them to get together. Is that, is that what we're suggesting here?
Disputes and disputes.
That is correct, what DC Water suggesting, suggesting.
Okay, and the parties we're talking about are?
DC Water.
Might you identify yourself to the record?
Yes, my name, thank you, commission, for having me. My name is Quindalyn Brown, and I am the land use and real estate attorney for DC Water. And we, I authored the letter. We have had several discussions internally about what type of meetings and discussions that have been, that have been held between DC Water representatives and GSA and Forest City. I do recognize that there have been some discussions with different departments at DC Water in relation to DC Water's combined sewer overflow long-term, long-term control plan, which is very different, then relates to the development of the Southeast Federal Center, as well as the partial L2 development. So I don't want the commission to be confused about discussions that Forest City and GSA claim that they have had. There have been some conversations, but it has not been directly involved with the development of those partials, such that the conversations led to meaningful discussion and implementation in their plans. What's been submitted to the commission did not necessarily reflect what was discussed in the plans, and that is why we submitted the letter, to oppose the plans as presented.
Okay, well, I'm very concerned always when I hear about folks not talking to each other. We all are. And I'm assuming that the letter and the amendment that has been suggested would help get, should help bridge that gap. Is that, is that what you feel?
Yes. That's the hope. That is the hope.
Okay. Has there been any criteria, I mean, it's pretty clear from comments, any criteria about what you kind of would like to see come out of this, other than just a kumbaya gathering, or do you have anything specific you kind of concerned about?
Yeah, we have our engineer, Mr. Steve Beyond, and I would invite you to come up and speak, because he can speak to our critical infrastructure.
Yeah. I don't want to get into the weeds here, but I am curious about this, because this is a major project and across the river from us.
Yes.
We look at it with great admiration.
Yes.
And we're glad Water, DC Water is going to do more with that historical location, but...
And I have to say that we would dispute the characterization of efforts and actualization of those efforts by Forest City and by GSA.
Yeah, I got the point, and Forest, Forest City is the developer, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. You know, they got a lot of juice, and that's important. But let me get back to my question about what you might want to see to come out of these discussions. So when we meet, there may be some more agenda, rather than just chatting.
Yeah, ultimately, our hope is to have Forest City and GSA incorporate our suggestions for how to best protect our critical infrastructure that lies underneath and adjacent to partial L, whether it's development of partial L1, which, L1, which is in the future, or L2, which is the proposed development for the residential building. We have our engineer, Steve Beyond, and I'd like for him to just briefly speak about the infrastructure there, as well as the importance of our two main pumping stations, the main, the historic main pumps, Main Street Pump Station, as well as the O Street Pumping Station. Both of those have been located in that area for over 100 years. The Tiber Creek Trunk Sewer was actually installed back in 1880. It had, and we recognize, as I stated in the letter that we sent to the commission, that the Tiber Creek Trunk Sewer has been there for a very long time. It is in poor condition. It is poorly supported. So right now, that is in our plans for the future, to hopefully rehabilitate that trunk sewer, to stabilize it, and we want to be able to do that without having any interference or further crack propagation that could happen to that.
So it's not about historical preservation, it's about functionality?
It is definitely about functionality and operations.
Can I, I'd like to hear, and I would, I'm sorry, commission, but I'd like to hear from the gentleman, please.
Can you briefly state your name again?
My name is Steve Beyond, Civil Structure Design Supervisor.
I didn't quite hear your name.
My name is Steve Beyond. I'm a design supervisor of civil structural design in DC Water. And this part of Tiber Creek, actually, it's a circus, 1905, is supported by timber pile, and with a historic perspective, this is built within, beyond the older shorelines, so it's not in a good geological term. And currently, majority of this segment next to parcel L2 is supported by the steel frame, because you can see from inside, it's fractured, offsetted, and the tree root is growing through. And this is a concrete masonry. It means it's really heavily dependent on the surrounding soil to support the old Roman arch structure. They have no steel poured in the body of the arch, so it's really not recognized as a historic structure, but it's a very historic makeup. And so it's something so tricky to design, to restore, and to maintain. So we're in a position, we absolutely trying to maintain the optimum performance, otherwise the nearby upstream neighborhood will be flooded in case something happened with this Tiber Creek Sewer, even after we have this clear-reover, long-term project kick in. So this is very mission-critical in our operations, and this is, imagine, if we're building anything today, it's a good, it can survive 50 years. This one has been more than 110 years, so we're in there need to collaborate and coordinate with all the stakeholders, trying to renew the life of this dinosaur.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I think this whole water issue, you know, is going, is serious, and I'm proving this is a very important element of our water system in DC. Is that correct?
Very correct, and actually, I was in a meeting, we discussed, you know, how limited option do we have? We want to maintain and upgrade structurally, however, because the hydraulic demand, probably we cannot do more than... However, because the hydraulic demand, probably we cannot do more than lining something from within more than a few inch.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it will causing some flooding on the street, in somebody's basement not far from this spot.
And also loss of water, I'm assuming.
That's true. That will likely causing SSO or CSO event, not planned for.
Yeah, I think that, you know, there's always a desire when we have things coming up to build, build and have a lot of housing and stuff, but if you don't have any water and you got a problem, then, you know.
We are super careful when we build the Clean River tunnels. When we do the shafting to the tunnel, we go extra miles and to do, underpin the nearby sewers, even doing the soil mixings to stabilize this old white land, to prevent any cave-in. And this is an effort that we like to share with the nearby developers, is how we handle the business to maintain the safety.
Well, thank you. We've had other jurisdictions in the nation that have played around with water, and they regret it years later. We don't want to have that happen. And I think there will be cooperation to make sure that we deal with that, I'm hoping. Thank you for your time.
No doubt, GSA and Forest City will continue working together, and the purposes of the amendment is to underscore that. Ms. Wright, do you want to read your amendment one more time?
Sure.
Just to make sure everyone knows.
Notes that GSA and Forest City, Washington, will continue working with DC Water to discuss existing below-grade sewer infrastructure along Second Street Southeast and report back to staff on the status of this discussion prior to submitting the master plan amendment.
Thank you. Any discussion, is there a discussion among Commission members about the proposed amendment that has been moved in second?
Just a question.
Mr. Gallus and then Mr. Man.
So the discussions would theoretically respond with associated design that would then.
Sure.
Ensure safety and stabilization.
As a matter of course, we would do this. And as I noted already, the design has been significantly affected by this very set of issues. So this is very frustrating for us.
I support the amendment, knowing that we really are just in a position to comment on this, and certainly want to make sure that there's continued coordination. I'm also certain that DC Water and GSA, the last thing they want is to have a failure of this sewer. I will say that there are some really loud alarm bells that go off when I read things about de-watering a 20- or 30-foot wide, 100-year-old sewer, de-watering when it's supported by timber piles. And knowing that we're dealing with a, you know, fairly narrow right-of-way with large excavation next to it, I mean, all these things are, you know, crazy alarms are going off in my head about it because it is a formula for real problems if you don't handle the excavation properly, and if you don't take into consideration the way the soil behaves and so on. So, I mean, it is a major, major thing, and I am certain that in the end, GSA and Forest City and DC Water will have to come to some agreement because nobody wants it to fail. I also would say that I have sympathy for the issue of how you speak to DC Water because I do know that they are siloed within their organization when it comes to things like the long-term control project versus the general engineering branch that handles the sewer system and so on. So it is quite possible that, it seems like you're talking to the right people when in fact, maybe you're not. I have encountered that myself.
That never happens at GSA. Ever.
No, no. And I also know how much fun it is to work with GSA as well.
That was a joke.
The EDR as amended is before you, well, first of all, the motion, the vote on the amendment, sensing no further discussion of amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Amendment passes. Is there any further discussion on the EDR as amended? Hearing none. All in favor of the EDR as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. EDR is approved. Thank you to GSA and to DC Water. Agenda item number 6A is a perimeter, a perimeter security improvement at the Harriet Truman Federal Building, which is the headquarters of the Department of State. This is a good news project. It's one of those that's been a long time coming, and it's a good one to have before us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. The Department of State has submitted final slide and building plans for the perimeter security improvements at the Harriet Truman Building. Over the last 12 years, the Commission has reviewed projects related to HST perimeter security improvements. As you may recall, the Commission reviewed the perimeter, the preliminary plans in October 2015. More recently, the Commission reviewed the transfer of jurisdiction of Reservation 104 related to this project in May 2016. In addition, the applicant has coordinated the HST perimeter security effort with two separate but related projects previously approved by the Commission, including the Diplomacy Center and the American Pharmacists Association perimeter security. Today, we will share the final plan that reflects the long and positive coordination process between local and federal agencies. We are pleased with the outcome and want to recognize the Department of State's remarkable effort integrating landscape, stormwater management, perimeter security to enhance the public space. As you may recall, the HST is the headquarters of the Department of State. The project is located in the northwest rectangle historic district, an area of major government headquarters, monumental institutions adjacent to the National Mall. Here is a closer look at the site. The 11-acre site is generally bound by 24th Street to the east, C Street to the south, 23rd Street to the west, D Street, the East Street Express ramp, and the Virginia Avenue to the north. The HST was constructed in two separate phases 20 years apart. The original H-shaped building referred to as the Marshall Wing was built in 1941. A significant L-shaped expansion that wraps around the original building was completed in 1960, referred to as New State. And the latest addition currently under construction is the Diplomacy Center, which will be completed this fall. Here, you can see images of existing conditions. There is a lot of temporary security measures, including concrete planters, screen vestibules, a truck inspection facility, and vehicular barriers. The proposed perimeter security will replace all of these on attractive temporary barriers with permanent security. Moving on to project objectives, as an inter-agency security committee level five facility, the building requires a higher level of protection. If you recall, the project objectives are to secure the building, protect employees and visitors, and improve the streetscape. The project will be implemented in two phases. The current submission includes Phase 1, highlighted in orange, which consists of a security pavilion along D Street, here, guard booths, perimeter security, and site improvements throughout the site. Phase 2, highlighted in purple, includes three additional security pavilions that will be submitted to the Commission in the future. Moving on to staff analysis, the final design has not changed significantly. However, it considers key planning issues raised by the Commission during preliminary review. First, I will give you an overview of the final plan, then I will focus on the design modifications that have been made since preliminary review, and how the applicant has responded to previous comments. As listed here, previous comments were organized into five categories, including landscape, protective barrier system, streetscape, pocket park, and stormwater management. As you may recall, the project includes a range of streetscape and building elements, and includes relocating employee and visitor screening from the interior of the building to four, at four of the building entrances, providing a total of nine guard booths to control vehicular access, developing a protective barrier system, reconfiguring D Street to include a pocket park, realigning curbs to address vehicular standoff distances, maintaining the same amount of traffic lanes and direction, and providing a consistent, actually relocating the truck inspection facility, and providing a consistent 10-foot sidewalk around the site. Now I'm going to show you the areas that have changed since preliminary review. You will see that these minor changes are mostly concentrated along 21st and D Street. In general, the latest plan refines the pocket park, expands bike storage, simplifies the boiler layout, includes additional benches, and develops further the stormwater management and landscape plan. It also includes material selections for streetscape elements, the D Street Pavilion, and guard booths. Regarding landscape elements, the final plan introduces significant landscape improvements. The landscape tries to accommodate as many trees as possible and provides approximately 200 new trees. In general, the plan continues the existing tree pallets from the surroundings and respects the former character of the area. The applicant worked with GSA and D-DOT to include a diverse palette with 18 different tree species, including street trees, understory trees, a mix of shrubs, brown covers, and pollinator-friendly species. Moving on to the protective barrier system, the design includes a perimeter security barrier system consisting of freestanding bollards, represented by the dotted line, bollards with horizontal rails, you can see in the dash line, and solid clad walls, which is the solid line. The solid walls indicate major building corners, major building entrances and corners. Here you can see a comparison of existing and proposed conditions along 24th Street. During preliminary review, the Commission recommended further develop the design of streetscape and security elements. The applicant has provided sample boards, which are located next to a screen, to give you a better sense of the range of materials provided. The materials and design refinements have been coordinated with CFA and NCPC staff. As you can see in this rendering, the boiler design here includes a low-rounded top and a dark gray metal cover. The rail centerline connection has the same metal finish as the bollards, and the solid walls, which you can see here in the entrance, are clad with charcoal granite. In general, we find that the proposed materials are durable and compatible with the existing building. During preliminary review, the Commission recommended to minimize the number of bollards to promote pedestrian movement, and provide a more graceful transition between security and architectural elements. You can see side-by-side the preliminary and final submission. The image on the right shows that the applicant has simplified the boiler layout to improve pedestrian safety. The final plan replaces pedestrian curb ramps, you can see here, with raised sidewalk crossing here, at the loading and parking entrances along 21st as well as C Street. The applicant has provided an improved rendering of the D Street Pavilion. The design and materials of the pavilion are inspired by the existing canopies and follow their architectural vocabulary with a large projecting canopy and receding columns. The proposed materials include stainless steel cladding, glass, and stone base. The materials and design of the pavilion are also consistent with the proposed guard booths, which you saw last October. Now I'm going to describe the streetscape elements. Overall, we find that the proposal includes significant streetscape amenities. The plan includes more than twice the amount of existing bike racks and benches. These amenities will be located mostly near building entrances. Since preliminary review, the proposed bike rack at the corner of the pocket park, which you can see here, has been removed and relocated farther to the east along D Street, and additional benches have been added along 24th Street. To give you an example of how security and streetscape elements have been integrated, here is an enlarged plan at the 23rd Street entrance. As you may know, 23rd Street is a significant corridor that connects to the Lincoln Memorial. You can see that solid granite walls announce the entrance, and also incorporate benches along the sidewalk. Now I'm going to talk about the pocket park. We're very pleased with the end result of this particular project component and feel that the design has improved since preliminary review. As I mentioned earlier, site improvements along D Street include a pocket park, a security pavilion, and a truck inspection station. Here is a section along D Street. You can see that the pocket park includes seating area, landscape, and provides a gathering So during preliminary review, the Commission provided several comments related to the character of the park, seating arrangement, addition of sculpture elements, relocation of the bicycle, the bicycle rack, and reduction of solid walls. As you can see in this image, the final design responds to the Commission comments. The plan identifies two potential locations for sculpture elements here and here, includes larger landscape areas with robust planting, devices the seating arrangements to create more intimate spaces, replaces the bike rack with benches and landscape to minimize clutter at the corner, replaces the solid security wall with bollard and rails to improve visibility in this area, and simplifies the security layout to improve circulation, especially at the corner. So here is an image of today's condition. So this is what we saw last October, and this is the new design. Overall, we feel that the pocket park is more welcoming and inviting. In this image, you can see less solid walls, more intimate seating arrangement, and enlarged planting areas. Lastly, I'm going to talk about stormwater management. Last fall, the Commission requested that the applicant provide a stormwater management plan. The project includes three types of low-impact development opportunities to capture roadway and sidewalk runoff. Bio-retention open areas along D Street, highlighted in green, bio-retention tree planters around the side, highlighted in blue, and additional soil volume on their sidewalks, highlighted in red. The stormwater management plan provided by the applicant addresses compliance with federal and local requirements. In addition, the plan reduces impermeable areas by approximately 7% by replacing pavement with new planting areas. The applicant has worked closely with DOE to meet the full required volume for public and private space. Initially, the Department of State considered using stormwater retention credits from other federal facilities to comply with local requirements. However, it was determined that because this program was so new and still needs to be better understood by federal agencies, it would not work for this project. As you may know, NCPC and other federal agencies are currently studying this topic. Last fall, the Commission expressed concerns about soil volume. As you can see in this section, the bio-retention planters include street trees and perimeter security. If you compare the two sections, you can see that the soil profile here and here has changed in order to meet local stormwater requirements. The design team found two ways to mitigate the challenges posed by the security foundations, promote root development, and increase soil volume. The plan includes a 24-inch-wide barrier footing breaks, you can see here, an additional soil volume under the sidewalk here. In general, the footing breaks correspond to street tree locations and will allow the root to connect to additional soil on the opposite side of the barrier. I note that this is an innovative solution, and the applicant has developed a unique construction detail to balance the tree health without compromising security. Managing this amount of stormwater in such an urban condition is very difficult, and we commend the applicant for what they have been able to achieve. And so with that, the executive director recommendation is for the Commission to approve the final site and building plans for the HST building, commend the applicant for working closely with NCPC, CFA, GSA, and other government agencies to develop a design solution that balances perimeter security, landscape, and stormwater management. Notes that any substantial. Notes that any substantial changes, including but not limited to changes in the stormwater management, landscape, streetscape, are required to be submitted to the commission. And notes that any improvements located in public space will require a public space permit and coordination with DIDAT. With this, I conclude my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the project team is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. I learned a discussion to commission on this long-time coming and very good project. Discussion or recommendation or motion?
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Still open for discussion. Since seeing there is one?
Just one brief one. I'm really happy with the improvements to the pocket park. Thank you for enhancing that, and the renderings were beautiful.
Go for discussion. It's been moved and seconded. EDR as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, Ms. Lee, very much, and thanks to the whole team who was, I know, who was present today. Agenda item number 7A is an information presentation on the Memorials for the Future Ideas Competition. This is a fun item, which is not to say the previous ones were not fun. This is an especially celebratory item, I should say. The National Capitol Planning Commission has been quite pleased to partner with the National Park Service and the Van Allen Institute on this remarkable exploration of new ideas for commemoration. We know commemoration is so much of what we do here. Lasting over the last over six months, the competition has provided a wealth of ideas looking at commemorative subject matter in a whole new way, using temporary, mobile, and adaptive approaches, incorporating innovative technology, telling new stories, and adding more voices. This has been an aspiring competition. It has garnered a good deal of public interest and media support, media reporting. And I would like to thank everyone, the competitors especially, but the jurors and our staff teams as well for all that you have done. Today marks the culmination of this competition. The exhibition launches tonight at the Kennedy Center for Performing Arts in the Hall of Nations. The teams will be there from 7:00 to 8:00. Kennedy Center, which is a living memorial, is a wonderful venue, and I want to recognize and thank Deborah Rutter, the director of the Kennedy Center, who has served on the competition jury as well. The key findings, in addition, the key findings report, which is entitled "Not Set in Stone: Memorials for the Future", is also to be released today. We will distribute copies. We have them already here. So if I could, I'd like to turn it over to fellow commission member Peter May to say a word to.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So this is the centennial year of the National Park Service, and the actual anniversary was on August 25th. You may have noticed there was lots of news coverage of that as well. And there have been many activities during the entire year, and they'll continue for a while. But we even did our own modern memorial, if you will, at a commemorative event. Maybe we could switch to the next slide. So we had just seen the MPS Arrowhead, as it is traditionally known, and then here we have more than 1,000 people holding colorful umbrellas gathered on the Washington Monument grounds, the world's largest Arrowhead logo. So what we have to remember that by are these photos, and so it becomes part of our history as well. We are still celebrating the centennial, and we're looking forward to a second century. Today, with the Modern Memorials Ideas Competition, it's the culmination of many months of work with our partners, NCPC, and of course, the Van Allen Institute as well. I want to thank them, the 89 individuals and groups who entered the competition, and especially the four finalists and, of course, the winning team. The centennial and the competition give us a reason to challenge ourselves and to think creatively about the future of commemoration. And as we head into our second century, we are committed to continuing this conversation and engaging people in the stories and commemorations that are important to them and to the shared heritage of our nation.
So our colleague Mike Sherman is here to give us an overview of the competition, and then we will hear from the four terrific teams. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The four finalists are here today, and they will present an information presentation on each of their proposals. But before we begin, I wanted to acknowledge some individuals who have been working really hard over the last six months. First and foremost, we want to publicly acknowledge Mr. David Vanderleiher and Jessica Lacks from the Van Allen Institute, who were our competition consulting partners and did a fabulous job on running the competition. Also want to acknowledge Tammy Stidham. She was the Park Service representative on the management team, and she also did a great job. And then finally, I'd like to thank Julia Koster, Steve Stoddical, Stephen Morgan, Dareth Bush, Angela DuPont, and Ken Walton from the NCPC staff, and Paul Jettin, thank you, who all went beyond the call of duty in making sure the competition was successful. With that, I'd like to give a little bit of background. We have some new commission members who may not be as familiar with some of our previous efforts. And so let me give you a little bit of background on some of our efforts to date. The Memorials for the Future Competition continues our past initiatives related to monuments and memorials, as well as publications such as the Twin Plan and the Memorials Trends and Practice Report. The Twin Plan identified 100 new sites for proposed memorials, while the Memorial Trends and Practice Report addressed content, site, and process issues. The Memorial Trends Report also included several key findings, such as commemorative subjects are concentrated around military, events, and political leaders, not a lot of diversity. The process for completing a permanent memorial is complex, time-sensitive, and costly. And finally, memorial proposals are increasingly land-intensive. And one of the major recommendations from the Trends Report included exploring memorial content from the finest grain to the broadest contents. Since then, NCPC has hosted the Beyond Granted Public Forum, which investigated global approaches to public art, place-making, and national commemoration. Further, NCPC recently updated the visitors and commemoration element of the comp plan, which recommends policies to help address these issues. The Memorials for the Future Competition continues this exploration and presents an opportunity for the nation to reflect on how we can fill some of the gaps identified in the Trends Report. In May, we received design proposals from 300 individuals, making up 89 teams. The top 30 semifinalists were selected after an intensive review of the team's concepts, approaches, sites, locations, and experience. From the top 30 semifinalists, our 11 jurors selected the four finalist teams to continue their research and design process. Together, the proposals presented ways to engage diverse new subject matter, allow for reinterpretation over time, and consider technology, new technologies, as well as honor national contexts and local experiences. The competition was composed of four phases conducted over a six-month period to include the initial application, research, and development of the memorial concepts, design and development and refinement, and then the creation of final project materials, which you'll see examples of at the Kennedy Center, as well as today during the presentations. As part of their work, the Van Allen Institute completed a findings report, which you have at your stations. It looks like this at the green cover. The report identified seven key findings based on the submissions. The first finding was allowing commemorative works to be designed for changing narratives. As time passes, new information is exposed, and cultural values shift, sometimes creating disconnects between a memorial's original message and representation in modern-day perceptions. Secondly, commemorative works should explore universal experiences in addition to places, peoples, and events. When we plan future memorials, we have an opportunity to reflect on subjects faced by all people. Next, we should have commemorative works that incorporate and use local settings for national issues. Some issues like climate change may feel abstracted in national debate, but smart design can create real opportunities to engage with and understand these issues in a personal way. A fifth finding by Van Allen is having commemorative works engage the present and future as much as the past. Events that unfold around us every day can be as compelling and culturally important. The next finding was to explore creating memorials with the public as well as for the public. The memorial design process can go further by offering individuals the chance to make personal contributions that become a part of the actual memorial itself. Another finding is commemorative work design should consider ephemeral, mobile, and temporary forms. The ephemeral creates a sense of urgency, generates excitement, and potentially even ignites action. Finally, memorials should explore designs beyond physical space. Technologies allow people to connect around subject matter in ways that don't require central squares or physical infrastructure. As the team's partners and jurors explored limitations as a critical component to understanding future needs and issues, three main themes or challenges were identified as elements to be addressed moving forward: curation, technology, and place-making. Concerning curation, the key research questions include: how can we develop inclusive and respectful memorials open to diverse and potentially contradictory points of view? How can we update material over time but avoid censorship or message manipulation? Concerning technology, a key question is: how do we plan for future technologies that we can't yet imagine? And finally, a critical question concerning place-making is: how do we create spaces that are valuable to both residents and visitors? NCPC, in partnership with the Park Service and other stakeholders, will continue to study these questions as we continue our commemorative work initiatives. The Memorials for the Future Competition will be used as a resource for future memorial sponsors. The ideas generated in the competition will offer new and alternative approaches to traditional commemoration. These concepts expand approaches to place-making, using technology, and about telling multiple stories. The competition is a starting point to discuss some of the major themes emerging from the groups deeply involved in a formal commemorative process as we move beyond granted, including our commission, the Park Service, the Commission of Fine Arts, and the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission. Latest evening, as you heard earlier, we hope you all can join us at the opening of the exhibition at the Kennedy Center, which will showcase the four finalist proposals. Now the four teams will provide you a brief presentation in the following order. And these are the names of the groups: American Wild, The I Am Immigrant, Voice Over, and Climate Chronograph. And so the first group is American Wild.
As they are coming up, I'll say that the American Wild proposal received an honorable mention from the jury for marrying the ephemeral and iconic. The team selected an iconic aspect of the American experience, the wilderness, found in our national parks, and brought it to an urban setting. Provides access to the beauty of these landscapes and serves as a witness to changes in the parks and even as a call to our nation, a call of action to our nation. It's intended to be a temporary memorial lasting only 59 days. It would be part of everyday activities. We have with us Shelby Doyle, Forbes Lipschitz, and Helena Steiner. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us here. It's an honor to present in front of the commission. I'm Forbes Lipschitz.
I'm Helena Steiner.
I'm Shelby Doyle.
And our other colleague, Justine Holtzman, couldn't be here with us today. We're going to speak to you about our proposal, American Wild. And we believe that the national parks are a living memorial to a really, truly uniquely American idea of the wilderness. And through a temporal installation in the DC metro, American Wild captures the majesty and diversity of the American landscape and brings it to its capital. In celebration of the National Parks Centennial, President Obama expressed his thoughts on the experience of visiting our national parks. And he spoke of their importance as really part of the American spirit. But at the same time, he states that, make no mistake about it, climate change is no longer just a threat, it's a reality. And it's a reality that is calling into question the legacy of the national parks for future generations. And so in the face of climate change, how can we bring the experience of the nation's park to its capital? And looking to the city, we can see that the DC metro helps to connect the capital's existing memorial landscape. The distinctive architecture of the DC metro was designed to be more than just infrastructure. It connected the public spaces on the surface to the infrastructure below, and in so doing, it generates a new form of civic pride. And it's in this spirit that we believe that the DC metro is the ideal space for a new kind of memorial. When we look at DC metro ridership, we see that the most-used stations sit near the memorial core. And because of this, we have selected the Lanfonte Plaza Station as an ideal site. It's closely sited near the memorial core. It's high in ridership, and it connects both the north-south and east-west lines, and in so doing draws from a large cross-section of the DC population. So how can Lanfonte Plaza Station become a platform within the existing memorial landscape? When we compare the experiences of visiting a memorial, a national park, and riding the DC metro, we see different senses of place. The metro is experienced through circulation and movement, and the memorial landscape through destinations. National parks combine these experiences, moving through the park to various scenic destinations within. The juxtaposition of national parks and the iconic architecture of the DC metro creates a new dynamic space within the capital and transforms a place of passage into one of pause. The sights and sounds of the American Wild create a new sense of place within the Lanfonte Plaza Station. This memorial can provide a wide range of experiences. At its most simple, it inspires a sense of awe, a new memory or a break from routine. At its most ambitious, the memorial is a call to action, simultaneously memorializing the past and the current national parks while petitioning for their future preservation. A memorial viewer may be inspired to visit a national park and learn about the specific challenges it faces. This unique experience then can bring a new appreciation for and awareness of the American landscape. A possible outcome of visiting a national park is a newfound commitment to ensuring their existence for the next 100 years. A memorial for the future is no longer a steward of the past, but rather a steward of the future.
How will we augment the existing DC metro? The primary medium of the American Wild memorial is projection. The memorial is identified in orange here and utilizes the passageways between the green and blue lines within Lanfonte Plaza Station. The memorial is visible from both the upper and lower platforms, both fully experienced in the passageway as to optimize safety and not disrupt DC metro operations. Projection mapping is a technology used to turn objects, such as the coffered ceiling of the DC metro, into a display surface for image projection. Specialized software can interact with a projector to fit any desired image onto a complex surface. Additionally, multiple projectors can be mapped together to create a unified and immersive image. This diagram shows three projectors atop a wayfinding pylon. The vertical wayfinding pylons, identified in orange, serve as the infrastructure for both the projector and sound installations. Existing LCD advertising screens and glass elevator shafts will feature additional signage for American Wild and provide information about how to learn- for American Wild and provide information about how to learn more about the parks. More specifically, QR or quick-response codes link to existing national park websites and phone applications. So, the question remains, how will we curate the memory of the national parks? The National Park Service has a long tradition of engaging artists. Recently, a project called One Day in Yosemite engaged 30 filmmakers spread throughout the park, gathering footage over 24 hours. Building upon traditional and newer representation methods, we propose that each park will be documented by a selected fellow who will reveal the subtleties of a day in the life of the park. The memorial is curated to last for 59 days, one day for each of the 59 national parks. The parks will be featured in order of their establishment, thereby creating a timeline of the 100-year history of the National Park Service that also advocates for their next The installation on the upper level of the Lanfonte Plaza Station can be seen from the platform below. Commuters here look beyond the platform to the sky of Sequoia National Park. The station is transformed from a space of commuting to one of commemoration. Metro users see here rise through the station beneath a formation of Arches National Park. Full-scale immersive video expands access to the national park experience, raising awareness and creating memories that outlast the installation itself. Metro visitors here are seen transported to Yosemite National Park. We also think the metro could probably use some positive press. So, we end with a video of what it might be like to experience a dynamic and temporal memorial for the future. Oh, no, we’re gonna restart. Sorry. Okay.
Thank you very much. Commissioner May can hardly contain himself.
Chairman, my question is, how do you get people out of the metro? I mean, we go there, we just spend the day, right?
Yep. The second team is the immigrant team honoring the journey. Sahar Kostin-Harty, Janelle Johnson, Michelle Lynn Luce, and Radhika Mohan are with us today. The immigrant proposal received an honorable mention for the community and the American heritage. The jury was struck by the team’s decision to commemorate immigration and migration, a topic that is universal and is deeply rooted in our heritage. The proposal uses a bus route replicating the immigrants’ journey and providing a mobile commemorative experience that links local, national, and even international stories together. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Radhika Mohan, and I’m joined by my teammates, Janelle Johnson, Sahar Kostin-Harty, and Michelle Lynn Luce. And before we get started, I just want to say thank you to the National Capitol Planning Commission, the National Park Service, and the Van Allen Institute for this opportunity to explore the immigrant. The immigrant illustrates the elemental experience of movement, arrival, and making a new home by commemorating the very journeys that friends, family, and strangers have taken through America’s landscape in the pursuit of opportunity and freedom. Our memorial celebrates the parallel stories of immigration to America and migration to the southern states to the north. Specifically, the memorial focuses on the stories of families from the Great Migration and from the Immigration and Nationality Act of 1965, where the earlier quota system based on national origin was abolished and a new policy based on reuniting immigrant families was established. Both of these significant acts contributed to the diversity of Americans that we see The physical framework of the immigrant uses the existing 2M master plan as the foundation and expands it district-wide to neighborhoods beyond the monumental core. The expansion of memorials into neighborhoods of D.C. creates opportunities for placemaking and other areas of significant historical importance while also building investment in the public realm. In addition, the interplay between local sites and state-name streets provides a strong framework for the immigrant mobile memorial to explore national and local stories. We tested this framework through a pilot project located in Ward 7 along Minnesota Avenue culminating in Randall Circle at the base of Fort Dupont. To create a district-wide framework, we first looked at all the state street corridors that aligned with major bus infrastructure. Next, we located candidate sites identified in the 2M master plan and particularly those that would create one circular route. For our pilot project, we identified streets connecting to Randall Circle, which are Minnesota, Pennsylvania, Florida, and New York avenues. Stories of past, present, and future immigrants related to these states are layered into the commemoration experience, respecting and celebrating the fact that neighborhoods inevitably change over time. Additionally, these stories provide opportunities for community engagement in the evolution of each memorial’s design. After identifying this physical framework, we explored Minnesota Avenue and Randall Circle as a pilot project, using a variety of techniques to share the stories collected, such as audio podcasts, social media, capacitive speakers, and placemaking techniques. Along the selected bus routes, capital improvements would accompany temporary art installations and serve the dual purposes of commemoration and beautification. The immigrant memorial also speaks to a national conversation while also benefiting the local community. For the visitor to D.C., a bus ride through a selected neighborhood would guide them through a unique portal to experience through sound, sight, and movement a slice of migration history. For a D.C. resident riding a segment of the loop, experiencing the immigrant memorial would involve the ability and choice to download different stories on different days, perhaps while commuting. Passing by familiar public spaces, one would see temporary installations that highlight a particular immigrant story or a collective migration narrative. With each loop, an existing public space would be designated to feature a place for public programming. And in our pilot project, Randall Circle becomes the designated open space. A critical element of this project is programming and engagement. Here, we created a sample programming calendar for the immigrant to take place over the course of a year. The pink portion details events at the national level, while the green portion shows programming tailored to the local loop and neighborhood. And now, we would like to share the experiential qualities that we’ve described through this video. Hope it works.
As a mobile memorial, the immigrant illustrates the elemental experience of movement, arrival, and the making of a new home by commemorating the varied journeys that friends, family, and strangers have taken through America’s landscape in pursuit of opportunity and freedom. This project is a living memorial, by tactic and nature elevating these narratives as an integral part of American history. The memorial invites all to engage in the exploration of these narratives in the hopes of building a better understanding of our similarities. The visitor first experiences the immigrant memorial at the bus shelter before eventually boarding the bus to begin a journey of their own. The shelters along specified routes are transformed by local artists, which identify access points to the memorial. The visitor has the option to listen to national narratives shared on a capacitive speaker at the bus shelter or on their smartphone while riding the bus. Movement is recalled while the visitor navigates their way by bus, listening to stories from people who have migrated to the United States, from various countries to the state corresponding with the street name along the bus route. The sharing of these stories provides individuals with the opportunity to gain a deeper understanding of what it feels like to move to and through an unfamiliar place, symbolic of the journeys that past generations have embarked upon.
What did it feel like when you first came to Minneapolis? I remember you telling me stories about how it was hard to find a job.
I’d finished my one-year fellowship in OB-GYN and anesthesia in India, and I thought it would be easier, I would slide into it. But there were a lot of racial issues, especially women getting into surgical field. And I applied a lot of places. Director of the Abbott Northwestern Hospital at that time, he said, “Why don’t you try the other fields? You know, it is hard for women, especially for different ethnicity, to get into a surgical field.” Then, one of Mohan’s friends again helped me to get in touch with Mayor of Minneapolis. And I took all my credentials, and he had one evening that you could go and tell your grievances. And I remember my eyes were welting, and he said, “Is my country not really new power?” And he was very kind. He said, he wrote a letter. Then I got into University of Minnesota Psychiatry, but it was not my chosen field. By then, I had gone to India. I had taken all my stuff, and I had decided if I wouldn’t get the residency, I was not going to come back. I took even my comb from here, that I was not going to waste all my education sitting at home.
The articulation of arrival within the memorial parallels the experience and anxiety of landing in a foreign place. Layered over recorded sounds of discord and angst, the visitor will hear illuminating stories about the Great Migration in America while also learning the history of the place through myriad journeys of people who have migrated to the specified neighborhood, honoring the diverse heritage of communities across the United States. As a voluntary experience, the visitor may opt in to hear these narratives through a capacitive speaker located at the destination or via podcast.
I thought that everything was going to be different, that people were going to be different, that racism wouldn’t exist, that I would be free to do whatever I wanted, to go wherever I wanted. And I guess the most shocking thing for me when I got here was that that was not the truth.
It was not perfect then, and it is not perfect now. But coming to an area where I had more freedom to make choices for myself.
Basically escaping oppression. They were escaping neo-slavery, subjugation, Jim Crow.
The younger generations learn the history of this community and appreciate why they are here, how they got here.
Once the visitor moves further into the site, identified as the Griot, they are essentially home. The Griot is the space where native, historic, and present stories are heard and shared through traditional storytelling, poetry, performance, film, and temporary art installations. A programming and events calendar will foster continued engagement with the space through temporary installations and events that honor various milestones in immigration history while also meeting the public space needs of the neighborhood.
As an immigrant, sometimes in the process of simulation, you join in, but you don’t share anything about yourself. Sometimes when you do that for a long time, you begin to feel lost. And to really like someone, they say, is to know someone. So, it’s important that we get to know about each other, and that includes learning about the background and also learning about the culture.
The immigrant commemorates the amazing diversity of America’s cultural heritage.
Thank you very much. The next proposal is Voiceover. Anka Trindafirisku is presenting. Voiceover received an honorable mention for futurism and reinterpretation. The jury recognized this team’s work to imagine technologies that don’t quite exist in an approach that defies commemorative space through sound and storytelling, that defines commemorative space through sound and storytelling. This proposal provides a way to add new perspectives to our existing memorial landscapes.
Sorry. Sorry about that.
It’s technology that doesn’t quite exist.
That’s true. You set me up well. Okay. Hi, I am Anka Trindafirisku. I’m here alone. But the work that you’ll see is not just my work, it is the work of me and three other partners. And they can’t be here because we’re all involved in the university. So, Professor Katania Culper and I are professors at the University of Michigan in architecture. And Troy Hillman and Yorong Wu are fabulous students that helped us on this project. So, they’re in school today. And it is my distinct pleasure to be here. I’m so honored to have the chance to tell you about the project, about something that I care so much about. Thanks for inviting us. Okay. And we had to come up with a team name, so we called ourselves Talk Talk. You’ll see why, I guess, in a minute. No one liked the name. I made it up. Okay. So, let me start here. We were drawn to this competition because of this title and because of what we imagined was a double and quirky kind of irony to this, right? Memorials but of the future. Memorials as something that would be solicited, you know, we would see memorials, but also a bigger question implied by the pluralization of memorials, the kind of idea of memorialization being underlying in what you were asking us to think about. So, not just a proposal, but how to change memorialization itself. And in truth, every piece of architecture always plays this double game. Help me. Is that better? Okay. I lecture every day, and I never get it right. Okay. In truth, every piece of architecture is always working on this double scheme, one local and one global, let’s say. And maybe even every cultural product does. So, let’s say something like fiction, for example, particularly experimental piece of fiction, might be both something we read, but also something that might stretch what we imagine the boundaries of that territory to be. So, we were interested. I’m going deeper into this maybe than I should, but it’s about how we pursued the project, which is on both of these fronts, both as a proposal, but also as an imagined idea about how memorialization could also be addressed. And so, some memorials are simply beautiful, and others, I think, are really powerful. But some memorials really do change what we imagine memorialization to be. And I think Mylan's project was one that did this amazingly, beautifully, in its difficult subject matter, in its critical position, in its formal minimalism and invention. And I could go on forever about the project. This was our initial submission board to the entry, to the competition. And basically, what we're trying to get across here with this collage is an allusion to a memorial that could potentially reflect on the power that we all have to create our collective cultural heritage. It's a memorial, perhaps, to a collective, perhaps to the notion of history-making, and in specific to this idea of revisionism as something positive, not negative, which we got directly from the speaking, this talk that Professor Savage gave at the Smithsonian Institute a few years ago, where he says that if we accept that history in memory are symbiotic, the corollary is that neither can be fixed, neither can be held in place. And this is such a radical thing for a historian to say, revisionism becomes the norm, rather than something to be feared or deplored. And so this was very inspirational. What we wanted to propose was not a monument per se, not a freestanding piece or standalone idea, but something we termed an overlay, rather than a freestanding monument. Our memorial is a system, a layer, which conceptually and physically sits alongside the existing constructed memorial landscape in the monumental core. We're not supposed to be... These are all the existing monuments. We changed your color scheme to pink, because that was our color scheme. Sorry. And these are all the memorials that we imagined our overlay system to be a part of. And you'll notice that a lot of them are in the monumental core and that cross axes on them all. And we wanted to propose a system that would overlay, oops, overlay on, responding to this quote by Musil, where he's talking about how so many things after a while become invisible. And so that we saw the potential of our project reawakening and introducing the monuments that exist to a whole new generation by adding another layer to them. Our proposal comes in three parts: collect, curate, and disseminate. The collection is the collection of an oral archive where visitors would tell their stories about the nation's memorials. Whether the stories are large or small, historical or personal, experienced or mythical, in English or not, all people would be invited to record the memories into a growing oral portrait. The second part would be a curation. This would mean that there would be guidelines established by committee, not by us as designers, but some understanding of what kinds of stories would be, or at least the flavor of the memorial would be kind of determined, and not just, we didn't imagine that it would be a free-for-all and that you could say anything you wanted, but we were hoping that all types of speech would be allowed, including potentially things like hate speech and controversial things as a full picture of who we are as a people. There's a couple of images on the right, like the little booth that would travel around collecting the oral archive, much like Story Core does. And then the last part is maybe the part that gets the most attention, the dissemination. We imagined that these stories that would get collected and then honed through the curatorial process would then get retold at the sites of the memorials. And we designed a pink flying, roving pack of parrots that would move around to the various sites and, one by one, drop down and tell the stories in the original voices of the storytellers themselves. And you would have, I could tell you a little bit more about the pattern, but essentially, on a given day, there would be five sites, let's say, about that, and at each site, maybe six, five stories, not to fatigue a public. The parrots would disappear, they would come back, they would rove slowly enough that you could follow them on foot for a bit. They're pink. Here they are at the Thomas Jefferson Memorial. Here they are at the Boy Scouts of America Memorial. These are, I'll show you five sites. We did a kind of Day in the Life of video showing them roving around the city. Here they are at the Law Enforcement Memorial. And all of these representations are meant to evoke the kind of layering up of story on top of fact, on top of fiction, that makes up what we imagined our memorial to be. Here at the Khalil Gibran Memorial by the British Embassy. Okay. And then there were various programmatic components, like the charging stations, so these birds would need to charge periodically, and we saw that also as potentially being an event that would be, we thought they should use the title base as their site for charging, and that that could potentially also be an event. Why parrots? Good question. Parrots, number one, because they are not native to the United States like most of us. Parrots because they talk. Parrots because they symbolize storytelling and storyteller's art, as Paul Carter says here. And parrots because, though they seem to be talking to us, are really vehicles for us talking to us. And that's what memorials are, too. So they're sort of symbolic in that way, and something that we just loved. And we just love that none of them ever existed in the US, right? They came here. It's also a kind of commentary on colonization. Here's what we thought they could look like. I wanted a hotter pink. My team wanted to be more reserved and elegant. I gave in. I think they were right. Why vocalic? Why make it with a speaking voice? Because so much of urban design and so much of memorial-making is visual. And we thought that we could command a different kind of space through the voice, and we could make an intimacy through that kind of connection. And we could make a presence that's different than just seeing something. They're not meant to look frightening, but they, they're not attacking. But, you know, we had a lot of discussions on the team about whether they should flap their wings or whether they should be more mechanical, and we ended up thinking more mechanical. Okay. Why stories? This one is potentially the most obvious. Stories because they are the primary currency of history, and that's how we create the stories of ourselves. Stories also because they're quirky, and they're full of all the inflections of people's lives, and they're messy, and we kind of thought that that could add a really interesting and beautiful layer to the memorials. And lastly, in the subject, we had the most conversation about the curation, like, why should it be curated? We thought that it absolutely needed to be curated because it is still a message about who we are, that we want to have some level of control over. But we had a lot of conversations about how the scheme of curation could change, and how much the accent of a voice potentially could be the way, like, one of the days where all the sites are visited could just be foreign accents. You know, the way, like, the curation would take its cues from the collection that we had made. This, again, is a kind of idea of the five sites a day in a life of the birds, and those are the five original sites that I showed before in the images. And what I really want to emphasize here, too, and we have a short video to show, showing the birds moving around, they rove around in the small pack, but one of the things about these sites are they're not neutral. So we thought about, how does somebody today have something to say through using these memorials? So at the time when we were doing this work, there was a lot of discussion about police actions over the summer, and so the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial might become a place where you might have something very contemporary to say, even though you're laying it onto something that has existed for a long time. And lastly, we pitched this idea of, we were asked, and, you know, and we respectfully declined to do it quite the way we were asked to do it, to phase the project. Because it's not allowed, because there's no drones allowed, drones, they're not drones. My parrots are not drones. But because that's not permitted in DC right now, there were questions about how would you implement this? How could you go about it? And could you make some birds that didn't fly that stood still, for example, or stood in trees? And we kept thinking that if we did that, people would just be satisfied with that and wouldn't ever go on to what we really wanted to see, what was flying birds. So we made this other kind of phasing idea where we would spend five or 10 years selling these kites at a very inexpensive price, getting the public primed to see something, to look up for something pink, to raise money, to raise awareness, and to eventually get to actually flying birds, rather than some other stand-in that we felt might be just too comfortable. So here's where I want to end the future. So if design is always a means to envisioning a future scenario, it can simultaneously offer a critical alternative to an existing normality. VoiceOver, our project, then, is to be taken as an architectural proposition that is a critical project on the basis that it offers several points of contended difference with present-day memorial practices and policies. And I want to talk about those with you because you're the people who can actually make those kinds of changes. So first of all, VoiceOver is a memorial that is dependent on public's input, and it is, in fact, improved through greater participation. So where memorialization today is a single issue and largely representative of the interests of one person and usually a well-funded kind of group of people that have a similar idea of voice offer, VoiceOver offers a world where a bottom-up strategy, representative of a large, multi-layered, and messy amalgamation, can have both access and agency. VoiceOver is lightweight and ephemeral and temporary. So where in past memorials, thickness and heaviness and permanence were prime, you know, this technology will run out. And I think we're saying that's not a bad thing, that maybe the commission would be willing to embrace technologies that will run out, and then another technology with another generation. We did imagine that the Library of Congress would potentially permanently house the oral archive, but maybe the rest of it goes away. VoiceOver is adaptable and unpredictable. It can keep up with the speed at which we receive information and, at the same time, go to places we don't know yet. Perhaps that could be embraced, too. VoiceOver is joyful, where some stories told might be quite somber. Memorialization tends not to deal in the currency of joy. But we thought that we are engaging people through the language of delight so that they may be open to dialogues to which they don't normally participate and to opinions that which they do not hold. We believe tolerance may actually have a color: pink. And then the two most important to me. VoiceOver exists on them all. Our generation right now cannot build on them all, so we were really trying to find a way to physically occupy them all. It's really important to this generation, if you want them involved in what our legacy is, to let them be there physically. And at the risk, at the risk of offending everyone in the room, my last point, my last point is, maybe implementation isn't that important when you hear from people like me. So this is an experimental project, and implementation was not on the table so much for us, because you all are really good at it. So maybe what is, what could be allowed more is, you know, some little wilder ideas that, I'm an architect for a long time. It's implementable. It can happen. Implementation is easy. I don't mean that it's easy. I mean that it's easy in comparison to the real task that is before you, which is, who are we and how do we put that in a memory? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So we made this cute video to show a day in the life. You can play it. About, again, how active, and at times protests might happen through these stories, or how it could activate through contemporary issues, right?
Very extraordinary. Thank you very much. That's extraordinary. And coming forward. And coming forward is the winner. We're pleased to have Eric Jensen and Rebecca Sunter with the Climate Chronograph Proposal. I'm pleased to announce that the Climate Chronograph is the competition winner. The jury found that this proposal is a powerful example of a worldwide issue expressed tangibly at a personal level. It explores the present and the future rather than the past. It is a memorial deliberately designed to change, decay, and evolve over time. It also allows everyday activities to coexist with the commemorative experience. So Eric and Rebecca, welcome.
Thank you for having us both and for the call in general. It was just a real honor to be able to participate in the visioning of memorials for and of the future. So thank you for the opportunity. So in starting to look at Climate Chronograph, we'd like to peer into another time and place altogether.
Thank you.
This beautiful piece of architecture is called the Nilometer from ancient Egypt. It measured the water levels of the Nile River. The central column was notched with levels that the water could be at, measured in cubits, which was the unit they used. And as you can see, just a few cubits would be the difference between suffering, happiness, security, or complete disaster. Now, this was a sacred place, a temple, as well as just a pure measurement tool, and it was really reserved for the priestly classes to be the readers of this, of the yearly seasonal water levels, because it would show the state's agricultural fate and really the state's security for the immediate future. Now, this went on for about 5,000 years, we believe, until the Aswan Dam was put in at Lake Nassar in the Nile River, when they, the function of society being uncertain and being at the whim of the skies was no longer desirable, they chose stability, security, and control, like most of the world has, in relying in human engineering. Now, is increased unpredictability in weather patterning, some call climate change, is upon us and is challenging our cities and our rural areas increasingly us and is challenging our cities and our rural areas, increasingly affecting marginalized populations, even though disruption hits indiscriminately, often recovery is disproportionate. And places like here in New Orleans with Katrina, or here in New York City with Superstorm Sandy, these events are events and they're in major metropolises and they gain a lot of press coverage and we see them often and communities that are devastated receive fair amounts of federal aid. Here, we're starting to see the events being less episodic and more slow-moving. And this is Tangier Island, which is just down the Potomac from where we sit today. And here, people's backyards are getting soggy and soggy. It's not these dramatic episodic events and it's not in these major metropolitan areas, but it is in more and more people's front and back doors. And moving up the Potomac a bit, we find ourselves at the tidal basin. And we see that the site that we have chosen for Climate Chronograph about 100 years ago plus was actually just river. And that's because when we were trying to build the fledgling nation's capital, we needed to invest in a very ingenious engineered system of control. And to do so, we made West and East Potomac Parks in order to contain the tidal basin, which is the keystone of flood control for the rest of metropolitan DC. Now, with sea level rise, we see that keystone itself is experiencing flooding. This is what two feet of sea level rise looks like according to Climate Central. Here, we see what four feet would be at the site as well as the greater region. Now, this was in 1985, when all of East Potomac Park nearly was underwater. So flooding is not new to the site, but we're seeing that predictions are saying that this flooding that we've been seeing historically will just be amplified in coming times and Now here, we look at the perimeter of what East Potomac Park is looking like and we're seeing major infrastructural failures, wall collapse, washout, subsidence, open joints. And the Jefferson Memorial, which is at the northern tip of East Potomac Park, just recently underwent, as most of us are probably familiar, a $16 million retrofit of the seawall, which was for a quarter of a mile length. Now, this was, the Jefferson Memorial was subsiding at a rate of eight inches per year and that 16 million has secured the plaza itself. But we heard from a news reporter this morning that he was out there last week with his cameraman and even just the adjacent sidewalks were completely underwater. So what the national parks and the greater DC area is facing is really a distillation of what, as I think American Wild spoke to earlier, this dilemma of American legacy. Now, National Park Service is our steward for a lot of our wild and a lot of our urban environments and we don't, there's an open question as to what to do with them, financially, politically, design-wise. For an institution whose mission is specifically and expressly about non-intervention, suddenly we're finding ourselves doing very active stewardship to protect the places that we have come to be near and dear to our hearts. So this open question remains and we can see things like this as failure, which they are of the engineering, but it's about this control. And if we remember the Nilometer, there was a time in history when our relationship with the environment worked with that uncertainty more than we do today. And when we went to the site, what we saw was this, something a little bit more poetic. It's a different frame for that failure and it was a water line expressing itself, much like when you go beachcombing and the most rich place to find the seashells, this collection of detritus of where the highest water line is coming up. So too, this is already happening at Haynes Point in the lawn itself. And it's really throughout the entire perimeter of the park. And it can be seen as failure or it could be seen as nature writing something and trying to tell us something new about the site. An emergent wetland is already coming up. This is Arrow Arum, which is an indicator species for wetland in the Chesapeake Bay area. And this is a mussel, which shows that these puddles are actually tide pools already happening on the site. And so our proposal is about embracing that indeterminacy once again and that uncertainty in just a little part of a keystone of a very controlled piece of landscape.
All right. And so as we look at the proposal, we begin with Haynes Point as it exists today. It's just an open field, essentially, beautiful views all around it. It's kind of this pastoral reprieve, if you will, from the intensity and hustle and bustle in the remainder of the National Mall. Our proposal's intentionally minimal. We begin by creating a sloped plain to the water's edge, which is a balanced cut-and-fill, the high side being back from the point and the low being at its apex, that's punctured so water can come through. Upon that sloped plain, we propose a bosque of cherry trees. And that bosque of cherry trees is planted like any other, a rather simple move. The poetry of the site begins to expose itself as nature writes its own record in the land. So as projected by many scientists, sea level rises. Here's a foot. A foot is four rows of trees. And so over time, a foot becomes two feet, two feet, three, four, until maybe just a few rows of trees are left. And so what we're left with is this ever-changing, ever-dynamic site. One simple gesture in the land creates kind of an infinite story in which a global narrative is played out over the scale of inches and feet on-site. And here we see that the site becomes a place for contemplation and discussion. Like any memorial, there will be an interpretive sign, but there are many more aspects to it. So we'll begin with the sign, but we can imagine what's going on under the surface of the water. Wetland, like we've seen, is emergent and successionary and will take root in the flooded area. So it's not just a story of death of these trees, it's a story of an emergent new ecosystem, the sort of thing that the National Park Service, I think, knows is happening and is beginning to articulate in other national parks. And probably something that we should consider as important to our own urban areas and urban parks. At the water's edge, we get a living and didactic landscape that, you know, a child can see directly, this is climate change, this is sea level rise, this is my relationship to it, and take that home. You can imagine an eighth grader coming for their eighth grade trip, like I took to Washington, DC. And you could come back maybe as an adult and you could see 20 years later, this is an entirely new landscape. Someone living in the Midwest with no coastal access all of a sudden sees this struggle that all of us who live along the coasts are confronting. So here we have a section of the site and I'll just jump into the enlargements. Fundamentally, our solution to the crumbling wall is a minimal one. We want to have a living dike per the MPS plan and just go with what has already been established as the solution for the wall. So that would be a simple riprap solution. We imagine the landscape is as simple as DG, which is a stabilized DG, which is used elsewhere on the Mall, and that the interventions are using the existing design language on the site. You know, the railing there perhaps could be more sculptural, but it's there and we want to maintain it because we think that this minimalism is important as a response. And then here, we're backing through the orchard, which you can imagine would have a sculptural characteristic to it, from younger trees to older trees as the waters rise until we hit this didactic edge. And that moves back into what's essentially an orchard, an open field where people can gather and talk and play, maintain that community characteristic, and we finish at this open edge. And so what we have is at once this sculptural and poignant pastoral meditation and at the other, an open community park, a park that exists in the same way that Haynes Point does today. And so we have a hybrid memorial landscape in which the community can come and can enjoy the day-to-day activities that they love to do at Haynes Point, enjoy the pastoral reprieve, but they can also think about this larger idea. And so, you know, fishing is now augmented with the painter who's visiting and wants to draw the landscape. The bicyclist is augmented by, you know, the child sitting and thinking. And so we conceive of this memorial as both a built memorial and an inquiry on action. And the key points that we want to leave you with is that this is a memorial that is slow. It unfolds in an intergenerational way. It's about larger human trends than the now and the immediate. It's about, you know, parents and children and their grandchildren and this struggle that we are realizing we are about to face. It's about generating inclusivity and affordability through restraint. In our report, you'll find a cost estimate, which is rather modest as memorials go. We tried to get the price up as high as we could. We only came out to just over $2 million, which we feel like is a very modest expense for any memorial on the Mall. And we feel that the modesty in the cost can help generate and preserve the community's ability to see it as an open, kind of their own field as well as the nation's. That it's a public index of an indeterminate vulnerability. At the bottom, maybe is today this grove and moving forward, there's a mini myriad paths that may occur here. Maybe no trees die. That would be fine with us. We would love to just see the, Washington, DC, add a beautiful bosque of cherry trees. Maybe that's enough to compel action or maybe nothing will happen. Maybe a few rows die and we stop there. Maybe all of them go and it becomes this living mark that, at this moment in time, we saw it was coming, we made a gesture and we acknowledged it. And I think the takeaway is that this is a living memorial and it's authored by nature. It is something that, in contrast to the static and granitic, is a way in which we're inverting our relationship with nature and we're allowing nature to articulate on the scale of inches, this indeterminate and sometimes scary future. We're bringing legibility to a complex and undoubtedly challenging coming epoch. And so in the distant future, perhaps this would be the scene at Haynes Point if the projections hold true. And that's where we'll close. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This has been extraordinary competition and lots of creativity for all of our design teams. Congratulations to you for being winners. Yes, sir.
I guess I've been around for quite a while and one of the things that we find controversial often are memorials. And in fact, some of them are our toughest mission, getting them settled and how they go. But I wanted, as a senior colonel, speak to a junior active colonel, Michael, Mike, about how symbolic it is that you make this presentation. Because I have voted painfully often against a lot of memorials that we have recommended for our city, for our nation, because I thought there were celebrations of too much war. Because we talk about war and it's, the reason that may be the case is because my political head says, there's a great constituency list. If you want to get a memorial on war, you got an easy mail out to get people to say, yes, it's a great idea. To get a constituency to support some of these other issues that we see today would be more complicated. And I hope we can get them going. I also want to say that I didn't really focus at first that there was a winner. I think they're all winners. I think that there's certainly be hope that we can get them all going. I want some parrots in Anacostia, too.
Pink, pink parrots.
Now, that would be interesting. And also, yeah, I also was, want to say that I've been blessed to be chosen by the mayor to serve in a transition group. We've been working for almost four months now to look at the Anacostia Museum and how its history or how its future exists with the new museum on the Mall. We have two different missions. One is the Historical Museum on the Mall, which is so important, and ours, which has to do with communities and the history of communities. And I'm not sure how we can get connections to your projects, but a lot of the things you're talking about are things we're talking about for the Anacostia Museum, not just about Anacostia, but our community as a whole and how we have survived and the migration into our community, now gentrification into our community, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I thank you very much for your, that's some insights I might try to carry back to them. And we may have so many versions of these east of the river if we could find fun. Thank you all very much. I think it's just great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. I would note that David Vanderleiher, who is with the Van Allen Institute, has been our longtime partner, is here. If you'd like to say any parting words or, I'd love to. You've been with us for a long time.
Thank you for having me. Chairman and commissioners and Marcel, thank you for the initial invitation. It has been a pleasure to work on this process and I must say, it's fascinating to see you sit here because we've been in this room a lot in the past months. And this was the jury's room also. So Marcel was always in his right seat, of course. But other than that, there's all new faces. So it's nice to see how this is being used in a day-to-day session also. I would like to thank all the team members. They've done fantastic work over the past months. These processes are always a lot of work, very involved. And to come back to the jury, whenever we would meet here, the jury would send teams home and say like, well, have you thought about this or have you thought about that? So this is how proposals shape up further. It was a fascinating process. Thank you all. I look forward to seeing all of you tonight for drinks, but I hope you will be able to make it for drinks also. And I would like to thank again NCTC and MPS for the very nice collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, if you can join us tonight at 7 o'clock at the Kennedy Center, we'd love to have you. Thank you. We've had a terrific day.